Okay, today is Wednesday, March 11th, 2020, and I would like to open the Vineyard City Council meeting. It is 6:02 on my watch, and Chris will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and then give us our invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our gracious heavenly Father, we come before thee this evening and we give thee thanks for this day. We're thankful for the blessings and opportunities we have in this great city. We're thankful for all those employees and all those who serve us in the Sheriff's Department and Fire and Safety, that he'll bless them and bless their families so they'll be safe. Father, this time, we also ask thee to have a special blessing upon those who are suffering in this state, this nation, and in the world that are dealing with illness and sickness, that they'll be blessed, they'll be able to start to feel better. Father, we ask thee this time to help us to have thy Spirit that we'll be able to read through the things that we have here before us, so we'll be able to have an open mind, an open heart, that keep the things we're supposed to do for the city to make it great. Father, this time, we ask thee to bless those specifically in this city, that they'll continue to have prosperity and good health and a good life. And Father, we ask thee for these things, and we thank thee for them, in the name of thy Son Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you so much. We will now go into public comments. This is a time for anybody that would like to address the council about something that is not on the agenda. If you would, please come to the podium, state your name and where you are from, and we will take your comments. Come on up.
I'm Bishop Dennis Frank from Cascade Neighborhood, 136 East, 425 North. Thank you, Mayor Fulmer, and City Council members. We're grateful for your service that you give to the community. We're grateful for our parks and for the area that that gives to us to use. We use them frequently and often, often. We would like, on behalf of four bishops and 2,000 members that live north of 400 North, we would like to see the Penny Springs Park opened up so that we can use that. We are divided up into buildings outside of Vineyard. My particular ward is assigned a building up by the mouth of Provo Canyon. So we really need to use, as the weather gets warmer, really wanted to use Penny Springs Park last fall, and then it was shut down. So we are grateful, but would love to be able to use this park for our primary children activities, as well as our young men, young women activities. I have done my research. I did talk with the city this past week. They said that a list was given to Flagship to complete. I called Flagship and talked with Branson. Didn't get any warm feelings with Branson in talking about what he was going to accomplish. So it is a finger pointing, and we would appreciate anything that you could do as a city so that we could get that, get that park open, even if it comes to pulling their permit. But thank you for all that you can do, and we appreciate you. Thank you.
We will take, we will take those comments back to them and, and let them know. And I know Sullivan's been working on it, so I talked to him, and you probably ended up talking to Sullivan or our Public Works Department about it. So unless anybody would like to make a comment about that right now, we'll go ahead and move forward and talk about it afterwards.
Thank you. I'd love to stay, but my, we're having a service project out in the Cascade Neighborhood tonight, so.
Okay. Thank you so much for coming. We'll have somebody, or you can reach out. I guess if you've already talked, we'll just follow up with you. I'll make sure we do. Thank you, Dennis. Okay. Are there any other comments? Yeah, please come up. Don't forget to state your name, where you're from.
Angela Trigo, Vineyard resident, 208 North, 160 East. Want to say thank you. Very excited. As a newer resident, I've been reviewing and looking at the city plans for the new town center. Very excited. As things change and become more fluid, I just, a couple of neighbors and I have been talking and want to make sure, just as a reminder, I think everything is currently looking good, but just as a reminder, to think about a few things that may drop off. Those are, number one, parking. Parking is always an issue, and developers will always make sure that they have as many residents as they can get for funding. And we want a place that people will come, and while I love that it's walkable and bikeable in the plans, if we want people to come, we got to make sure there's free parking and plenty of parking. Number two, lighting. We have a unique community here in the fact that with Utah Lake on one side and so much green space, which is awesome, that we actually have much darker skies than most communities. I can walk outside at night and watch the Perseid meteor showers currently. That's pretty cool. We need to make sure that we have downcast lighting, and I know that you have changed that. For example, Vineyard Grove Park actually does not have downcast lighting, but Penny Springs does. And so if we can make sure and have that downcast lighting and make sure that we don't have too many big lights and bright city lights on our big high rises, I think we can, we can mitigate that now. And I think the third factor is that our neighbors, Provo, have increased the airport. That's going to be a great boon for us because we're so close. But we are directly north of that, and we need to realize and start working with them in order to ensure that air flights and path flights don't go right over our neighborhoods and affect that. So just some things to consider and think about. We'd certainly appreciate that. Thanks.
Thank you, Angela. What, what community did you say you're in?
Parkside.
Parkside. Thank you so much.
Yep.
If I just might assure you, the airline's already established by the federal government. It's over the lake.
Great. Good. Thank you.
Yes, and actually, if you wouldn't mind leaving your email address back on that list, then we can follow up with you on some of the concerns you mentioned. Thank you. Come on up.
My name is Thomas Call. I am, I live in Edgewater Townhomes, 723 East, 380 North. And I'm going to echo something that was just stated primarily about parking. I'm sure you've heard lots from us over in the high-density area, or really probably anywhere. But I live in a three-bedroom townhome with my husband and our roommate, who actually owns the place, and there's not enough parking there for even just the three of us, let alone visitors. We live right along 400 North, like right across from us is where the construction is happening right now, and guests constantly park there, not even thinking that they can't, because it's currently blocked off. And so we're constantly having either my husband, who parks in front of the apartment complex west of us, along with many other people, and our guests, they're constantly having to walk several hundred, a thousand-plus feet to get from their car to our building, which concerns a lot of our female friends, concerns us when our father, my father-in-law comes and visits. As he's older, walking isn't as easy for him. He's had a stroke. And it's just, it's frustrating to see parking spaces literally in front of our house that we can't use. I, we've been told that it's because 400 North will eventually be a through road. But again, 400 North on the Orem side has parking, 400 northwest of Mill Road has parking, State Street and Orem is a through road, and there's parking along the sides of that. Many of us don't quite get it. And I love Vineyard. I've lived here for four years and have moved around in that area. But literally, the first thing that comes out of people's mouths when they hear I live here is, oh, I hear parking is terrible. When people come over, the first thing they say is, why is there no parking? First thing we ask is, where did you park? To make sure they're not going to get towed. And I just, I think it's such a great community. I'm really excited about the developments that are happening and the growth that's happening. But all of my friends that I'm suggesting come live here nix it immediately because of that issue. And I just would, I would just like more information on what plans are for that, or if there are reasons, what those reasons are, so that I can have them and share them with people.
Thomas, have, has your, if you mind, I could ask a few questions. Has your management company at all talked about potential parking lots that they could purchase, or anything to increase the parking that they provided for you?
The most that we've gotten from them, they've said, as the clinics and whatnot that are moving across the street from us, they said they've talked with them about maybe being able to use some of their parking in the evening after business hours, which we hope can happen. But I know as we were in the process of moving in and contracting and everything, they said that there was limited parking within the complex itself, or limited curbside parking, because under construction, areas have different fire laws, or like fire lane laws, than communities that are finished with construction. So they assured us that those would open up once the buildings were finished, and those have not. And there continues to be just inconsistency with curbside parking, where some curbs allow it, other curbs don't. You see a lot of former parking spots along curbs where it used to be okay, then those got cut. There's a random space. So in front of our houses, we have our sidewalk, then a little bit of a yard, then another sidewalk, then a little bit more yard, and then the road, which generally you see the road and sidewalk not being separated by a bit of a yard, and that's plenty of space for cars to go as well. So everything that our landlords have said, or not landlords, but the HOA has said about the parking situation and how they would resolve it, we see less parking as time goes on instead of more.
Well, I can tell you this. As a city, what we've been doing is facilitating meetings with the HOA to kind of encourage better parking. One of the conversations that you're talking about is that shared parking with the parking lots across the way in the medical buildings. That's something that our planners and our city has been kind of encouraging and working on. What I'll do is have, our next meeting, we'll put it back on the agenda to circle back and see how those conversations are going. And maybe what we can do is help provide a little bit of information about the construction and how the roads are a little bit different here on 400 North with some of the public transit that we have planned for that area, and why it had to be shut down for this time. But I think more information is always better. Transparent is always more helpful. That helps us know what we need. And then, and see if they have some other solutions. But if you want to put your email back on that list, I'd be happy to have somebody follow up with you as well.
Thank you so much.
On that. Yep. Take care. Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to address the council? No? Okay, seeing that there are none, we'll go ahead and move into Mayor and Council member reports. And I'm just going to start down with Chrissy and move this way. If you have something cool, if not, we'll move on to our next item.
Each member has my legislative report. As you know, the legislative season is coming near an end. The bills that have passed are down at the bottom. The towing sign revisions, I don't think will affect us. They're principally for private property. Municipal regulation of golf carts, we now have the power to allow golf carts legally on our roads, since that bill has passed, if we choose to do so. It's an action we have to take. Local government nuisance ordinance reform, I think probably Pam needs to look at that, and maybe Morgan. There are some changes in what we can do as far as regulating nuisances, noise. Okay? And then electric vehicle charging network, there's a number of bills that passed on that that we can take advantage of for funding to get those charging stations in the city. The rest, the others you can look at, some are not so good, some are not so bad. But I would suggest you look at the bills that I've listed and read them and see if you're interested in prompting our representatives to act in accordance to your desires.
Thank you. Chris? No? John?
So just to kind of follow up on the coronavirus that everyone is aware of, concerned of, or depending on where you're at on it, I have asked Neely and Jake to upload the most recent report from Washington DC, from the CDC, with what we need to know and be doing. So that'll be on our website shortly. Along with that, this is information I'm gathering from all of the emergency managers that are part of Utah County. There's a couple other information points I'm going to be giving the city through our website that will be helpful for those who want to be kept more in the loop from a national and state level as to the best information that is known. And keep in mind, that's a part of, I think, some of the concerns we're seeing is maybe a lack of good information. So I'm going to make sure that the information that emergency managers are using for Utah County, that is available to everyone from our website. And along those lines, this is the latest update from, and I'll, and I'll put those websites out there. I can, I can tell you right now, one of them, for those who are listening, if there's, if there's any coronavirus.utah.gov, that's a good source. If you want to be updated regularly with any Utah County-type problem, there's the Utah County Ready App. And I'll reiterate that I will make this all available on the website. But common sense things apply with this. The things your mothers and fathers taught you when you were little, wash your hands, don't touch your face, your nose, your eyes, your ears, and just good, good hygiene practices are the key here. And then, and then there was one other thing I was going to kind of pass along. I did, a couple weeks ago, I was up on Capitol Hill, and I was at a lunch where Senator Mitt Romney spoke. And he gave, and I'm assuming he's in way cooler, better meetings than I ever go to, he gave the report that he received, which was, the normal flu, each year during flu season kills 0.5% of the people that contracted. And I'm hoping, I believe I'm quoting this correctly, and the coronavirus is 2.5%, is what I was, this is the information he handed us. I see people shaking their heads. So again, information. The reality is, you know, we just need to be, whatever your feelings are, my recommendation is, we don't panic. I don't know when panic has ever helped anybody. Okay? And that's probably the best advice I have. So whatever you're going to do, good hygiene practices, and don't panic. Be intelligent, be wise, and move forward.
Thank you. Do you mind if I add to that, John?
Sure, yeah.
I guess with that is just prevention. So anything that you would do to prevent any kind of illness. And so if you're sick, stay home. And if you do find out that you have coronavirus, the real key is to quarantine yourself for a couple weeks. But the, the goal is to spread over, if, if we are going to get sick, because people will catch it, and most Americans will not be affected by this, and they'll be asymptomatic, as that's who are most Vineyardites, I guess, is who we're talking about. But there are the people that are dealing with immunosuppressant pre-existing conditions and people that have respiratory issues. So if you are those people, be more aware of it, and that's really where you need to focus. And if, one of the things that's recommended by our Lieutenant Governor was that if you do find out that you're sick, please call him before, because the goal is to spread over, spread this out, the amount of money and the time that we're spending at our healthcare, distribute it over a few months versus short, all at the same time, couple of weeks. And this is why, if you're feeling sick, to distance yourself versus going out in public if you're not feeling well. So, and just elbow bump. So that's the goal. All right. We'll go ahead and move on to Staff and Commission Committee reports, and we will start with Sergeant Rockwell, and then we'll move to our City Manager, Jake McCart.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to introduce my supervisor, Lieutenant Wayne Keith. He was recently promoted within the Sheriff's Office. He oversees contract cities, all except for Eagle Mountain, and so he is, he's my boss, and he's here tonight. Just wanted to introduce him to each of you and to the residents.
Thank you so much. Thank you for coming, Wayne. Yeah, please feel free to say something.
No, I won't have a lot. I won't take up a lot of your time, but I just wanted to pass on that our sheriff, the undersheriff, and then my supervisor as the chief deputy, Dave Oliver, that they just wanted to make sure that you guys know that we're here to serve you. We are public servants. I know, we have a lot of faith in Holden. I know what you do, too. I know some of you here, but we're trying to put our best guys forward to take care of you. But if you have any concerns, I want to get to know some of you, so if you have any concerns, you feel free to give me a call at any time, day or night. And, and we have a lot of other, I know you're growing. We plan to grow with you and take care of you in whatever ways we need to. So anyway, if you have any questions for me, you're more than welcome to let me know.
Does anybody have any questions for them?
Just, thank you. We, I think we've got great, great guys here, staff here, that's helping us out, and we really appreciate them. So my feedback is, they're doing awesome.
Thank you. That's good to know. I met with your City Manager a week or so ago, and he kind of told me the same thing, too. But yeah, he's one of our, he's our varsity, one of our varsity guys.
Yeah. We're so lucky to have him. We feel the same way. He's our varsity. Awesome. Thank you. Thank you for coming. Go ahead, Jake.
I'll be brief. I've been attending the LPC meetings, too, at the Legislature, and a lot of the bills that we were really concerned about have been amended or don't look like they have a lot of momentum. There was an email sent out this afternoon about the fringe gambling bill, so if we can kind of collectively reach out to our legislators about that one. We don't have that issue currently in the city that I'm aware of, but it could be coming as we continue to grow. Those are the, the slot machines you see at gas stations around the valley, and they're popping up at laundromats and other places like that. So the amendments that are being proposed, the league is in favor of. If you didn't get the email, let me know. And then if, if you want me to send you that, I can. So just reach out. The staff is going to be going around on Tuesday, the 17th, delivering door hangers for the census. The census is really important for the city. We collect a lot of our sales tax and the road tax based on the population that we have in the city. And the last time we did the census, we had 139 residents. So it'll be drastically different. But we did some estimates, and we project that we get $1,800 per person, per year. So if we undercount in the city, we're losing out on that money, and it's not money that we could ever get back. So the way that the census works is they kind of true up every 10 years, and then between census times, they do estimates based on building permits. So this census is going to be crucial for us, and so we're taking a lot of steps at a staff level to make sure that we're being proactive with all of the high-density that don't necessarily have accounts with the city. But you will see a push, and if you want to put signs in your yard, or reach out to your neighbors and make sure that, that they're counting. A lot of people think that there could be some retaliation from the city if they're, for any reason, not following a city code. None of that will happen. We don't have access to the data that you put into the census. There will be no action taken from a city level, even if you aren't following codes. If you have an unregistered Airbnb, or an unregistered, not Airbnb, basement apartment, or something like that, you don't have to, you don't have to worry about the city taking action against that.
But it will highly affect our transit and transportation and any funding for our special districts that come from the state or the region as well. So that's really critical for us as a growing city that needs infrastructure.
Yeah. So I say that, and then if any of you want to help us distribute door hangers, Tuesday the 17th.
Okay.
We, nine o'clock. We have our next race coming up, where the Recreation Department has the Gold Rush. We have a few staff members that have been assigned to be leprechauns, and you get to chase the leprechaun at the race. So that's Saturday, the 21st. There's a 5K and a 10K. You can still sign up, and we'd love to have as many of you that want to come run with us. The last thing, it's budget season, so the staff is working on budget projections and stuff for this coming year. So if you have any ideas or things that you want to see happen in the city, let us know. Reach out. We'd love to talk to you.
Awesome. Just a quick update on UTA. Everything is moving forward with the meeting for our frontrunner station, and so that is still on track. They have an open date of either December or April because of the exchange dates. Our overpass is moving. You probably all got the email, and for the public, all the permits and everything is going forward. Good job, guys. So that's moving forward, and that construction will continue. We'll see that open this year. Our bus route, our staff's been working with Ken from UTA, and we're going to be seeing that come into the city, so that's working really well. I don't know if you guys were able to see this, but the lake project that went down to the county was passed, and so that funding for the beachfront went through, so that's also very exciting. And then continued conversations on the Vineyard Connector is going really well right now. We've been in several funding stream conversations, and it will be a continued effort, but we're, it's going well. So, yes, please.
I would like an update on the Penny Springs Park. Sound like there was a difference of opinion. Is that how we view it as a city, or?
Sullivan, can you get a brief update?
Bronson's saying no.
We, they've been delivered a list, as far as I know, and they're working through the list. I, as far as I, I know, I don't know of any.
Okay, so we're waiting to get feedback, or stuff done. Okay.
In fact, I'm Sullivan. Bronson did reach out to me today. He wants to get with us and go over the punch list and stuff, so that he can move forward. But the decision last fall was because there was a punch list items, and because some of the work involved requires, you know, better weather.
Because some of the work that needed to be done, involved, but needed to have better weather for the trees and stuff like that, they decided to put off that work until the spring. So they'll be getting that as quick as they can. Obviously, another issue is irrigation water, and so normally, we don't get irrigation water in the ditch until April 15th. So, you know, all of those things kind of play into this situation, and it was their decision, you know, not to open the park and not to do those. So we are working together, and we'll move forward as, you know, right along with the contractor.
It might be nice to get.
Did you want to hear?
I was gonna say, it might be nice to get, like, an update on social media for people. With the weather being nice, there's going to be a lot of questions.
Bronson, did you have anything to add to that right now? Maybe a perspective from where you see it?
Yeah. Sullivan summed it up pretty well. There's, I don't know what's going on with my computer. That was a weird noise. Yeah, we've, we've got a punch list that we're working through. We need better weather to do some of the landscape items, and water to be turned back on. So, yep.
Any other questions? No? Thank you. Thank you for making that comment. We'll go ahead and move on to the consent items. Is, are there any questions for discussion, or can I get a motion to approve the consent items as presented?
Hold on. Pam's saying we can't do anything. Okay.
Oh, I am going to now declare and proclaim that the last day in April be Arbor Day in Vineyard. Is that okay?
I agree.
Sounds great.
Yes, I will sign that afterwards. And.
I think you should hit.
Upon request. Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent items 6.1 and 6.2.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Excellent. We'll move on to business items. This is a discussion and action for the municipal park code amendment, and Mariah Hill, our Assistant Financial Director and Treasurer, will present this.
Yeah, this is just, we were starting to rent the fields out instead of just the pavilions, so there's just a little adjustment in the language to make sure, sure that the code encompasses all city facilities and not just pavilions. And then added a statement about, that will allow the sheriffs to kick out organized groups, basically, if they're using the field without having reserved it. And so that's it, really.
Just a quick question. How do you go about doing that? Will you ask them for their picture and permit?
It's, it's very loose. Like, it just says organized group and may be asked to leave. So it's kind of like, if we notice that there's a club soccer team every, you know, Wednesday at 7:00 PM.
You'd notice it, or if there's a conflict.
Yeah, but if it's like, just a, like a party that's there, that we don't need to kick them out.
What if it's a weekly young youth group that was brought up, or?
So we talk about churches, and if they would like to assure.
They still have the ability to go and.
If they would like to assure that they're going to have the field reserved for them, then they can come and pay the fee, but we're not going to kick them out for using it as their nonprofit and things like that.
Okay.
I'm sorry, can I, so, are we, we're talking about the Grove Park field specifically, is that right?
All fields.
All parks. So in the main field in Grove Park, is that divided up into?
Yeah, three fields.
Three fields?
Yeah, and we would only ever allow two out of the three to be reserved at one time.
So is there currently like a rhyme or reason to the way that the goals are out there? Because they just seem pulled around all the time. Like, are they supposed to be lined up in each field, or?
I don't think so, unless they're set up specifically for a recreation program. I don't.
So if you reserve a field, it's up to you to drag your goal, or whatever it is.
Or there is some, I think that you can work with Brian, that they might help have the lines painted, or the.
Because you paid the fee, someone would go and do that.
Yeah, okay.
That's pretty standard at other fields, other than putting the poles in the ground.
But if it's not reserved.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
To, to add to that, if, if they reserve a field, then we will mark the lines on the field and set the goals up.
To, to add to that, if, if they reserve a field, then we will mark the lines on the field and, uh, set the goals up, you know, as for those soccer games or whatever. The, you know, we just barely got the wheel kits on those soccer goals. Ideas, we probably would like to lock those up so that they don't get abused, uh, but we're still working on that process.
Excellent, thank you so much. Um, if there are no other questions, can I get a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the municipal park code amendment, ordinance twenty twenty dash oh one.
And a second?
Second.
This is done by real call vote. Kristy?
Aye.
Tice?
Aye.
Aye, Chris?
Aye.
And John?
Yay.
Okay, great. We are going to move to eight point two, however, there is some, there are some things we're still waiting on for this. If I could get a motion to continue this to the next meeting? And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, excellent. Uh, we'll move into eight point three, which is a public hearing. This is zoning code text and map amendment, ordinance twenty twenty oh two. What I'd like to do is start in a public hearing as this is presented. It's been presented a lot in here, so it's more of a recap. So what we'll do is we'll open it to the public for the city council and then we'll close it and have questions.
I'll make a motion that we open the public hearing for the zoning code text amendment, map amendments, ordinance twenty twenty dash oh two.
And can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are now in a public hearing. Did you guys wanna come up and do a presentation? Okay, great.
And if I may just provide just a really, uh, quick intro on this?
Oh, thank you, Morgan.
Yeah, so, um, we received, um, the proposed application about three, three and a half weeks ago and have, uh, staff has all reviewed it, many of the city council members have provided us their comments, uh, planning commission has reviewed it. And so, um, we're in the process of doing updates and getting a final version that where we can write the preamble and the, the ordinance language that would, um, be attached to, to this proposed code. So there are a couple of things that we're still working through and, um, we met with the planning commission on March fourth. Um, they provided us some of their comments and then continued the public hearing until, um, March... Eighteenth, eighteenth. And, uh, our recommendation, uh, to you is, as we're, we're still in the process of pulling this together, is to, um, continue the public hearing to March twenty-fifth. Still take public comment, um, but if you can continue it, that'll, that'll leave it open, so when we have the full draft ordinance ready, that members of the public will be able to make comment on, on, on the, the actual draft that's gonna be, um, adopted, if you, if you so choose to adopt it. And, uh...
So will we have to do a public hearing for that as well?
Um, we, we did notice it for, for a public hearing and so it's kinda been, um, their requirement under state, uh, under the state code is just to have one, but it's been the practice of the city council for codes, for like zoning ordinances, to, to go through both with the public hearing, so we've just kinda followed that process.
Okay, that's great, more transparent.
Yeah, more transparent, more opportunities. So, uh, Pete's gonna provide kind of a, an overview. I, I think he may get into some of the changes that we're, we're working on, uh, together. And, uh, follow in his comments, if, if there's anything else that, that staff wants to add, we'll, we'll jump in.
Okay, thank you so much. Pete, take it away.
Um, so Pete Evans, um, Geneva Development, so we, I, I know, I know this has been presented, uh, several times. You've all been through, uh, the presentation. I'm happy to go into the, um, kind of overall as, as much as you would like. Um, but I thought since, um, we had a, a public working session combined with the planning commission and city council and then, uh, publicly noticed, um, work, uh, working session with the, uh, planning commission, we could just, um, kind of give a brief comparison between the plan that was previously, uh, approved and the proposed plan. Talk about some of those changes and then talk about some of the, um, issues that we're working out with the code changes right now with staff, if that makes...
That works for me, council, does that work for you? Yeah, okay.
So as you, um, are aware, the, the plan that you see on the left is the approved plan, uh, that was approved the end of last year. So, um, that, that plan served as the basis for the, uh, plan that we have proposed right now. The main changes between the two plans were, really had to do with walkability, which I know is a word that we've, that we have used freely in council chambers here. Um, but really that was the goal. Um, Jeff Speck gave a very thorough, uh, presentation to the planning commission last week about the, the design elements that kind of underpinned the goals of the walkability and the design. And I'm happy to go into those, I have his presentation. Um, although Pam has them as well, if you, if you care to review them. You also saw them when he presented the first time and it's really about creating an environment that is conducive to walkability. And there's several elements that they look at in trying to do that and in programming a space. And so the idea behind the transition between the approved plan and the proposed plan was to try to incorporate those elements of walkability into the plan, redesign the, uh, road and block structure to make that, um, a more walkable place and then redistribute some of the open space, reprogram some of the promenade so that we create a more, um, overall attractive environment from the south to the north instead of kind of concentrating all of our efforts on the south. Um, that, that walkability, if you will, is more distributed throughout the entire project. So kind of the highlights of the changes, uh, you'll notice that the, the promenade area, instead of being a wide promenade all the way from the east to the west, um, from the train station on the east to the lake on the west, is distributed now to where there's a second promenade to the north, which is kind of a smaller, um, neighborhood-focused promenade. The promenade to the south, the main promenade, is broken up into several areas, uh, which we call activity nodes. So the beginning on the east side is the transit plaza, which would be, um, kind of that experience as you get off the train. That would be very transit-oriented, it would be retail-oriented, uh, and it would kind of receive, um, the people both departing and arriving on the train. That would move into, um, what we're calling a market street area, which is just west of the transit plaza area. That, um, moved from a linear promenade that you see on the left to a narrow street that you see on the right. Yeah, I have a mouse here, too, I guess I could use, yeah. Yeah, or you, I mean, this is a pointer, you could be the pointer. Yeah, okay. So th- this market street area here is, um, is significantly reduced in width. That had a lot to do with, um, just kind of framing that space as you look at walkability and the proportions uh, that makes sense for retail-centric area. So this will be the, the main kind of first floor retail, uh, shopping area of the plan. And then that moves into, um, our traffic square here, which distributes the traffic as it comes into the project. Uh, this will be kind of more of an entertainment district area here around the traffic square and this section of the promenade. Then as you move west, it widens out significantly and this becomes more of the civic, uh, park area. And then along, obviously, the lakefront on the far west area here as well. Um, kind of more of a, a typical open park area blending in with the, um, lakefront uses that will be, um, along the lake itself. In addition to that, we modified the, if you'll notice on the left-hand side, we had the office area up here on the north. That's been redistributed, uh, down here to the south to be more focused in the TOD area and the transit area uh, with some urban adjacent neighborhoods to the north. Um, with again, more green space distributed through it and more relating better to the Geneva Park on the north end. Those are really the, the main changes that were made in the plan. There are a lot of nuances, obviously. Um, w- we've gone over those, I think, pretty thoroughly, but happy to talk about any of them individually that, that you would like to talk about. Uh, the plan on the right, obviously, is a little bit more fleshed out where we started to do some massing studies and started to look at what types of uses made sense where. Um, but really, it goes back to the overall code and, and, uh, what drives that. So i- in the code itself, um, there were some changes that we made to facilitate that plan. Um, there were some outstanding items that we had from the joint working session from city council and planning commission that you asked us to work with staff on and, uh, coming up with some solutions on those. And so I thought maybe I'd just hit those briefly and talk about some of the solutions that we're proposing and then we can discuss those if you have comments on them. So the first one are the, um, the building mix. So in the, in the code that was proposed, uh, that, that Matt had drafted, he had removed some of the restrictions on the building mixes and so we added those back in, we kept the ratios the same. But as you'll recall, um, one of, one of the concessions that we made for, um, adding residential to the north and consolidating the office to the south was to double the amount of commercial, uh, non-residential use that would be required before those ratios went away. So it start, it was, the, the approved code was five hundred thousand square feet and we're proposing to change that to a million square feet before those ratios, um, wh- while those ratios are in effect. Other than that, there was a, a change that was asked, asked to be made, um, where we extended the, um, lakefront commercial to the north. If you'll notice on the left plan, on the approved plan, that lakefront commercial stopped short of that transition road intersection to the north and you had requested, uh, that, that lakefront commercial be extended all the way to the north, which we did on the, um, the proposed plan. The next thing that, uh, we talked about was the building heights. Um, the change in the building heights, we had, um, some building height, we, we had taken off the restrictions on the building heights on that lakefront commercial area and the, um, feedback was a request to limit the building height in some way so that we didn't end up with, uh, some sort of, uh, physical wall barrier from buildings that would block views of the lake, that we'd have some view corridors that were pretty substantial going to the lake. So the, uh, what we're proposing is that that code would, that code would change to be a three-story maximum, uh, in that area with no more than thirty percent of the buildings by square footage area being able to go to six stories. So if we had a taller use that wanted to be in that area, we could go up to six story, that, that use could go up to six stories, but it would be limited in the total lakefront commercial area to thirty percent of the buildings by square footage. Did I explain that clearly? I feel like I did it three times in different ways and I don't know that any of them stuck.
Pete, just to clarify, uh, you said buildings first and then you said square footage, are you guys gonna do square footage or...
Square footage of the buildings.
Square footage, cap.
Yeah, main building, square footage. Great. The main floor, the, the first floor of the building, square footage. Uh, so the, the, a six-story building would be limited to thirty percent of the total of the square footage built in that area on the main floor.
All right. Quick question that I have. Sorry, quick question that I have. If somebody comes in and builds a three-story building...
Yep.
As an example.
Yep.
And they have a pretty nice view of the lake for whatever reason and then their neighbor builds a six-story...
In front of it, in between them and the lake?
Yeah, like, I, so I'm just trying to understand, is that just how that plays out and that's how that plays out? Or is there anything we can do to help that? Can we maybe make a, I mean, are we allowed to make a plan where the six stories are more to the, to the east of this master plan? Or is that not really allowed or applicable or am I asking for something that's impossible? I'm just thinking out loud.
Yeah, I don't think it's impossible. I think, I think what we're trying to do is create those view corridors like you're talking about and then allow the flexibility for some taller uses if it's appropriate. For example, if a, if a boutique hotel wanted to come in and have, you know, a six-story tower as part of that, um, use, then they could go six stories.
So to clarify the thirty percent, if you look at the lakefront commercial as a whole project and assume that there's a hundred buildings that all have the same footprint, thirty of those hundred buildings could go to six stories, the other seventy would have to be three stories.
You're not saying that a building could be, thirty percent of it could go six stories and then part of it has to stay?
That's one way to do it, but, but it's, you're saying the same thing. But o- overall, if you take the lakefront commercial as a whole, um, thirty, thirty percent of whatever is built can go six stories. Seventy percent would need to stay three stories.
And the way Jake put it, I can see that...
Yeah.
That would look nice.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a big illustration of what we're talking about. Did you wanna add that?
Unless it's all in the same.
Let's see. The, there was, uh, um, some discussion on the amenity requirements for the multifamily housing. As you recall, the, uh, proposed, the original proposed draft code removed the amenity requirements for multifamily housing. Uh, the logic behind that was that, um, you know, the, most of the time when you have an amenity requirement, it's because you have a standalone project where these projects are part of an overall master plan and we're trade, you, that trade-off is usually private space for public space. And where we have so much public space here, um, we thought it made sense that... You, you heard Matt and Jeff in the planning commission meeting both say, we, you know, we've never seen this before. We heard you loud and clear in the working session that even though it may be unusual, um, there was still a, a desire to make sure that, that, that there was an appropriate level of amenitization in the project to trade that, that private for public open space. So that what we're proposing is that, um, in a multifamily housing, uh, development over fifty units, um, excluding the lakefront, uh, residential district, we would have within one-eighth mile of that, um, access for residents to two of the following. Um, so the, the two of the following would be secured bicycle storage, community gathering area or meeting room, playground, barbecues and pocket parks. And then, and we'll, and we'll send this language, obviously, uh, to staff so that they can get that to you and review it. Uh, within a quarter-mile access, we would have, um, three of the following. It would be a fitness center, swimming pool, splash pad, uh, basketball, tennis, plaza or hot tub. So combined between the two of them, you'd have kind of an eighth-mile radius and a quarter-mile radius. Within the eighth, you'd have that first set of amenities, at least two of those. And within the quarter-mile radius, um, at least three of those on that list.
Could you circle maybe kind of like what that would look like on the map? So people have a sense of, I, of what a quarter of a mile would look like on there?
Um...
I think it's like a four-minute walk, I don't know what that is.
So...
Basically from promenade to promenade and from prom- north promenade to promenade.
Promenade to promenade is a quarter of a mile?
So if you think a, is, it's a half mi- no, a quarter mile is a five-minute walk, right? That's a five-minute walk and shed.
So am I right that this is about a mile from top to bottom of the town center?
Yeah.
So if you chunk that into...
Yeah, probably pretty close, yep.
Ish, okay.
Yeah. So if you chunk that into fourths...
Yeah.
And then into eighths. So, so the goal, the goal would be to try to, um, ensure that there is that proper level of, of amenitization, but also give the flexibility to make sure that if we wanted to consolidate some of those amenities, that we could in different nodes.
So Pete, uh, to, to clarify, you said that it would be for developments of fifty or more units?
Yes.
If you're looking at this as one whole project, is, are you basically saying every unit is gonna have? Or are you just saying buildings with fifty or more units?
Yeah, I mean, uh, effectively, yeah, so it'd be a multifamily project would, would, would be. And I think if you, if you look at a multifamily project, sometimes it'll be, you know, two buildings in a block. Um, but we, you know, we just thought fifty's kind of the number where you say, okay, beyond fifty, you ought to be providing some of these amenities in the public spaces.
Would it, would it be applicable to where the, the townhomes are or is it more...
Yeah, it would be applicable to the townhomes as well.
Okay, so, okay, so you're counting that as a, like a project area, okay?
And, and again, um, so just to kind of put this also in perspective of the, of the public space package, because I think that's important to remember that this isn't, this isn't a standalone apartment project, um, you know, that, that you'd be building. And, and I understand, you know, and staff has been fantastic about spending unbelievable amount of time with us working through some of these issues and helping explain some of the motivation behind the issues. One of which was, um, you know, originally, the concept for this area was to sell off small blocks to independent developers and then, you know, this block would develop as a project and some other block would develop as a project. And then, you know, they would have some responsibility to improve adjacent open space area, but, you know, who, who knows how that really, uh, developed out. And so, you know, un- understanding the motivation helped us to be able to craft, I think, some language that makes sure that there's amenities there for the residents, but also, you know, looking at this in, in the broader scope of the open space plan that we have for the project. I think that the, the residents that are living here, uh, will have access to... to an amenity package way better than any standalone apartment project. And, and way better than the current adopted code requires. So I, I, we feel like this is a trade-up.
And I was gonna also just kind of go back to the question that a number of our good citizens have brought up, which is, um, what we're becoming known for, parking. It used to be bugs. I guess it's, it's parking now.
Yeah.
Um, so, um, are, are we still, I mean, it was months ago we talked about it. Uh, you know, that has to remain a massive priority. Are we still on track with all of the parking?
We are.
I mean, that's all still in there?
It's all still in there.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's all, um, you know, ag- again, this is one, another one of those areas where, uh, our consultants and the data would say, we should ratchet down the parking that's in the code. And, and we've said, maybe, you know, as the years go by and we're able to have data that shows.
Maybe later on.
Yeah, ma- maybe later on we can revisit that. But as it stands now, we haven't, we haven't, uh, changed what was proposed in the code.
Are there other questions? Are there any questions from the public?
So, uh, I'm sorry.
Are you still going?
Mayor, um.
Forgive me, it's so quiet.
No, I know. Usually I'm not so quiet. So, um, there was also, um, some, uh, questions or comments on the, uh, open space improvements and what that process looks like. I'm happy to have Bronson kind of walk through what we see that process and schedule looks like, uh, if you'd like. And, uh, he can kind of go through some of the things that, um, were talked about in the design, kind of the overall public design meetings, uh, work sessions for that. And, and just so that we can kind of get a rough calendar process in everybody's head on where we see that, those improvements. Is that something that would be helpful?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you have that last slide maybe?
Yeah. Oh, this one?
Yeah.
Oh.
There you go.
Okay.
Okay, so as far as the open space goes for Vineyard Town Center, we had some, some open space concepts that were in the original code, adopted in 2015. To those concepts, we've, in this new draft, this new code, we've developed some new concepts. You know, the promenade being the sequence of spaces as you go from the front-runner station down to the lake. The next step there, that open space workshop, we held that in January, where we identified a, a whole lot of desired programming elements that, you know, kind of our wish list. The way I kind of look at those are like, uh, the open space areas will in, may include that list. We may, we may add to that list. The goal would be to get as many of those kind of wishlist items into the open space. So the, the step we're at right now is to adopt this new code. Once we, the code's adopted, we'll go through concept and design development, which we, we would welcome as much input as the city and community wants to have in that process. And then, as we move through that design development, we would come back through work sessions with, uh, planning commission. City council will go through site plan approval. So these, these plans are gonna be seen many times in, in public meetings. Uh, once site plan is approved, um, which is a city process, uh, construction drawings are, are developed. Then we go through the, the city permitting process with building department. And, uh, yeah, as you guys are improving your process too, if there's other departments that need to be reviewing plans, we see that as happening in the permitting phase, and then we move into construction. So you can see we've got, we've got a lot of stuff ahead of us that we still need to work through. Um, that, that, like I said, we'd welcome as much input as the city would like to have on that. Um, as far as, uh, um, schedule on, on the, the lake promenade, um, we plan on building the roads that flank the, the promenade this year and getting those paved this year. And then, um, through the winter, as much as we can do, we'll be working on those open space areas. And then this spring, summer, um, we'll be doing, you know, major improvements on those areas and, and hopefully having those open in the fall of 2021 or spring of 2022. And then, um, uh, the waterfront grant, uh, congratulations on that, that's awesome. We would love to be involved in, in that planning and, and construction process. Not exactly sure what that looks like quite yet. And then the Geneva Park is that other major open space component, which is, we've talked about before, is a little bit of an unknown is there's, um, the, the soil depository, um, for the Geneva site. So some of that is up in the air, but we have, I think, a lot of really good concepts on what maybe could be done up there. And as we develop further north and have a little bit more time on the environmentally upside, we'll know how that's gonna come together, and we can plan that a little bit better. But each of those major areas, I, I think, go through the same process. Anything else?
Thanks Bronson. So, um, just kind of, the, the last time we talked to you, there was a little bit, a little bit of, um, discussion about what's going in the lake promenade? Like, wha- what would that look like? And I think, um, Bronson did a good job of describing the process of how we'll determine what goes in there. But, um, you know, there, there's a base level of improvements that are required by the code. Um, our, our plan is to, um, highly amenitize the promenade so that it's a, it's a, a magnet feature for the area and for the, for the region, really. And, and kind of the iconic, um, part, the iconic focus of the project. And so that, that's why, you know, Bronson has a whole bunch of slides that he put together from the kind of design ideation, uh, process that, that happened in January. And then that, that process will get refined as, um, we go through the working sessions and then obviously through the site planning process as well. But just kind of, uh, as an overall, I mean, the idea is you've got the transit plaza area that'll be sort of hardscape area, pavers and planters and kind of a more urban feel. And then more open space feel as you head west towards the lake, uh, down past Market Street and through the, through the traffic square, through the central square plaza. Okay, happy to answer, any questions?
Okay, are there any questions from the public? David, can you come to?
You, I'm sorry, Mayor, because it's been noted, can you just officially open the public hearing?
We did.
That's kind of, that's what I, okay.
Good point, 'cause I usually do it after, I changed it up on you.
So I, uh, thank you for letting me ask questions. Um, I just have a couple of questions about, about our favorite topic, parking. So I know, I've, I've noticed in previous iterations of the plan, the most recent ones, there are four parking structures, um, excluding that. Um, will there be, will every building which has a residential use have parking in it to support or to accommodate the, the, uh, parking for the people who would live there? That's, that's, that's one plan. And if so, how much? What's the minimum maximum? And start with that question. Do we, do we know?
No, no. Do you want Mayor to go first?
No, no, go ahead and respond. You can just stay up there if you want to.
Pete Evans again. So the, the buildings have not been designed individually. The parking structures are standalone parking structures that are shown in the plan. So, um, the buildings may or may not have parking associated inside the building itself, but each of the buildings will meet the minimum re- parking requirements. Um, there, there will be parking spaces dedicated to each residential unit that will meet the code, uh, for parking spaces.
Um, Pete, Chris came up with an idea, or somebody down here did. But you could come sit up here if you want to.
Come join us, that way you can answer our questions and their questions.
We'll just turn your speaker on, it's gonna get used. Luckily, can I grab my nameplate out of the?
You have one that you have yourself.
You can have Nate come up there and help.
And David, did you say your name? You did probably.
David Larray.
Get back.
So, Vineyard resident, so. So, um, question, that was the first question, thanks. So, so you'll have parking places, uh, to support every residential unit? And the not, not counting the parking structures that are in the plan?
Well.
That meets the requirement, right?
No, what I said is that there will be parking, um, allocated to each residential unit that meets the code. Some of it may be in a parking structure, some of it may be in a building. Uh, some of it may be podium underneath the building. We, we haven't designed the buildings yet.
Will any of it be in the, those four public parking space, uh, structures that have been inspected so far on the plan, on the map?
Don't know, I mean, pro- probably.
Probably will, so, so those, those buildings would not be dedicated parking for the public? Or public, they, they would be, they'd be possibly used for residents living there?
Correct.
I see.
Isn't the goal to make a mixed use?
Yeah.
Like daytime is business and the evening is residential?
Right, and, right, right.
Put it together as we've talked?
Yeah, I'm.
Okay.
My concern is if I, if I want to use it, if anyone else actually, anywhere else in Vineyard wants to use it, you know, we, we're gonna have to drive to get there, 'cause we're not gonna be able to walk there the way it's designed. It's really walkable once you're there.
Mm-hmm.
But getting there is not walkable. So if we want people to come, we have to have a, a place for them to park their cars so they can come and walk.
Totally, totally agree, and that, that's, that's anticipated in the plan.
And so, and so roughly, how many spaces do you anticipate for those, those four parking structures to inspect? Roughly, you know, approximately how many parking spaces we expect to be open to the public, not committed to another resident in those buildings?
I, I don't recall if it's on the, do you, Nate?
Actually, Nate, you have to share a seat with Pete.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Just kidding.
Yeah, I mean.
Keep a safe distance.
Well, here I am, I'm used to this. Um, Nate Hutchinson with the developer. Uh, one of the, one of the good things about the plan, we don't have the map up here, the change between this and the original code that was adopted is we have about twice as many roads and streets as the original plan had. So there's about 2,500 to 3,000, uh, additional street parking stalls on top of all of these parking structures and garages and podiums and everything else. So, uh, the, the goal for us, um, I also want to point out that one of the reasons why parking has become an issue in the city is, is because there's a lot of different owners in a lot of these different buildings, right? So in, in your area, you know, then they'll rent out to three or four people per building, and it was only planned for two and a half stalls. So all of a sudden, you, you get buildings with three and four and five and six. And so, uh, as we've talked to our consultants, one of the biggest things we've found in parking isn't really what the requirement is originally. It's how do you enforce the parking that is there, right? I mean, if you require a half a unit, uh, a half a stall per unit, which we're not doing, but I'm just saying there's a lot of areas that require a half a unit. Uh, and that just means that for every two units, there can only be one car. And so if, if you permit it and you enforce it, parking doesn't become an issue like it has in some other parts of, of the city. And so I think that's one, that's one thing that, that will, that will be very critical to how this project goes. The second thing is, is this is a long-term project, um, that will have much larger projects than just, you know, a, a couple, uh, individual townhome units that get sold off to other investors. So I think it'll be very critical to the longevity and the, the viability of the project. We are as interested as anybody else here that the parking doesn't become an issue, or nobody will come. If nobody comes, nobody rents, nobody leases, nobody buys stuff from the retail, and it becomes an issue. So I, as we've talked with our consultants, they're saying, you know, this is more parking than you need. We're saying, well, no, let's just, like Pete said, let's just see how that goes. And we have enough land there as well, that if parking becomes an issue, we can, we can increase some of those parking as, as it becomes an issue. But we think enforceability is the main thing, and then street parking and all the other stalls are, are critical to that as well.
Thank you.
And along the lines of what David asked, it was, it was a good question about, will I not be able to, from Sleepy, Sleepy Ridge Community, go on the trail by the shores from my house on a longboard skateboard or a bike or a scooter, whatever we're doing as a family? I can get to the lake promenade downtown center from there, right? That's gonna be one of multiple ways that doesn't require me to be in a vehicle to get there, correct?
Correct.
Okay, 'cause I, you brought up that point, David, and I was concerned that that.
No, that's really good, four miles later, you'll, you'll get there. Yeah.
Four miles?
Yeah, I think, I think the great part, I think the great part about this is that the questions responded to both the needs of parking and also responded to the needs of other mobility. So that's a gre- a great question.
Yeah.
And comment.
To comment there, David, as well, I think that as we bought this project, we feel like we're creating a very unique project in Utah from the walkability standpoint. That, that was kind of our main goal, and we spent an enormous amount of money creating it. But we also realized that we're a very auto-oriented part of the country. So as we've looked at this, we've, and we've got Trav, the best traffic engineer in the state here, and, and he can attest to this, we've said all along, we think this walkability will, will take off here because we just don't think there's anything else like it in the community with transit and everything else that we have. But we need to make sure that if for some reason the transit doesn't take off and the walkability doesn't go like it's designed to go and everything doesn't happen, that it still works as a normal auto-oriented community. And so I think that's important to point out, that we're not, we're not coming in here saying that we're changing the whole mold and everything has to be walkability, and if walkability doesn't go, then the project doesn't go well. That's not, we, we've designed it to do both, and we feel like the walkability will make it very unique and be the X-factor, but it's designed as well to work for auto and everything else, so. Just wanted to point that out.
Thank you. Don't forget to state your name and where you're from.
I'm Amber Rasmussen, and I live in the Meadows right here. Um, I just wanted to bring up, I've brought it up many times with the planning commission, but, um, sustainability. I've harassed Morgan about LEED certification, I know there are alternatives to that. Um, but I haven't heard any plans. Can that be part of this plan you guys are working on, or where does that belong? Who am I talking to?
Me, so Pete, Pete, so, so that's, it's a good question. It's a comment that wasn't, it's a, uh, something that wasn't addressed at all in the original plan. It's a comment that staff has asked us to add as part of the overarching goal of the zoning code in this revision. And so there, there is a, a goal in the revision to have a, we'll, we'll have a sustainability statement in there that says that we're, the project is encouraged to, to look at, you know, those types of, of solutions. So, you know, um, Bronson is a licensed landscape architect, and, and one of the things that he does in his spare time is work on the water conservation. I don't know, we call it council or board or whatever it is. Um, but he, yeah, whatever it is.
Some dumb stuff.
Yeah, something, something. But, you know, he, he's very, he's very interested in finding ways that are working in other areas where we can conserve water and we can use, um, natural ways to treat storm drain runoff and those types of things. So there will be a lot of those, um, those types of innovative things incorporated into the plan.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the, I think, uh, like I said, Morgan asked us to add that, that as part of the zoning code and part of the development agreement, so that is being added in.
Okay.
And you, you might not be able to see it as well, but the council also has had a lot of discussion in the planning commission about sustainability. You can see the little water basin at the bottom, the little river in the design. So there's some things that we're starting to add, but it's definitely going to be a part of this code from at least my seat and perspective.
And Mayor, if I can just quickly add?
Yes, please, Morgan.
I respond to a lot of the EDC Utah, that's the Economic Development Corporation of Utah. And they send out RFIs for companies that are moving into Utah or companies that are expanding. And one of the main criteria is that, um, they have LEED certified or there's a, a lot of sustainability elements, 'cause that's part of the vision of, of a lot of the, the companies too. And so.
Okay.
I, it's also kind of a, a private, like a market solution, because if they want to get some of the best tenants in their Class A office of spaces, then, you know, having, um, you know, sustainability features are gonna be important to a lot of those tenants, so.
And I'd like to make sure that, you know, it's integrated into residential places, if possible, because, you know, that's important for our citizens to, you know, can lower their bills, their utility bills, if it's well-built and their, improve their health, if we've got proper things going on, so.
Thank you.
Glad to hear it.
Thank you.
So I just had a quick comment about open space.
This is Brad.
Bryce Brady, for resident in Vineyard. Uh, so with the open space, Utah has high rates of depression and suicide. Uh, lots of parks around Utah are filled with tennis courts, basketball courts, soccer fields, baseball fields. Um, sports where you have to have friends to go and do these things, you have to know people. Um, I just want to comment that, uh, there should be more, um, activities for people that are by themselves. Places where people can meet other people, such as, uh, skate parks, bouldering, um, parkour places. Um, I would love to see stuff like that. I would love to see stuff like that, especially in a walkable community like this where a majority of the residents, I imagine, are gonna be young athletic, not necessarily athletic, but young adults that are walking. That want outdoor activities, but don't necessarily have a, a crew to do stuff with. So I just think that it's important that we have activities for people that I don't wanna say don't have friends, but people that want to get out and not have to rely on other people, where they can meet more people, where they can feel a sense of community. And I think that by having activities where you can be by yourself, um, I think that's important for our community. Especially when we talk about having, um, the whole, for our general plan, uh, point is having something for everyone. Vineyard is a place for everyone. Uh, we should have places where kids can go to playgrounds. We should have places where older people can go for a walk and have it be quiet and peaceful. We should also have places for young adults where they can go and even be by themselves and do activities and get out.
Thank you so much. And we've appreciated all of your input and comment as we've been planning the park spaces. And I think it's really meant a lot and we'll keep that in mind as we're planning our park spaces. Are there other comments? No, if not, can I get a motion to go out of the public hearing?
So move.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any comments or questions from the council at this time?
Can we get a general feedback from the planning commission from Anthony? Is that okay?
Yeah. So in the last planning commission meeting, um, you know, we did continue the, the public hearing due to some of the ongoing discussions between the staff and the applicant. So it was nice to hear some of the updates, uh, that, and the progress that you made there. I think we touched on most all of the, the concerns that, that we had shared, um, in the recap there. But if you have any questions for me specifically about what was discussed in that meeting, because it was a, it was a robust meeting we had. It was a long one, uh, but, uh, we covered a lot of ground. So if you've got any specific questions about.
What, what, what was brought up on parking?
So yeah, parking, uh, we had some feedback similar to tonight, um, from some residents that, that came. One was from a community manager of another, um, nearby the, the lakefront area. Uh, that was just not necessarily concerned, but just curious how overflow would work. And also she was impressed with some of the public amenities there. And you know, with the connector being there, is that going to be a physical barrier for, for people in that area that would otherwise walk? But may decide that they have to drive because of a four-lane highway going through in between. So those were some of the things, uh, what David brought up tonight too, uh, is just making sure that people that want to get there that don't necessarily live close by, you know, once they get there, they're happy to walk around. But how do we, how do we make sure that they have a good, good way to get in and park or ride the train or use the trail system, whatever it might be? I think those were some of the, the key things around parking, not just with residents, but people coming in from, from outside.
Sorry, can I ask another question?
Please, yeah.
So, um, we heard about the, uh, for every apartment complex or whatever you wanna call it, multifamily complexes, fifty units or more, they'd have certain amenities within a certain, uh, distance. What, what, what was discussed at the planning commission level on that?
So that, that was actually new to me tonight, hearing the update on, um, what had been discussed, uh, with, with the staff. So you know, I'm happy to hear that they're working on that plan and you know, we'll, we'll consider that again as, as a planning commission this upcoming week. But, um, yeah, I, I'm happy to see that there are some amenity requirements in there because initially I, I believe the proposal was, you know, we'll let the market drive this. And I, I think there was some unease in our joint, uh, session that we had. So I'm happy to see that that's codified a little bit in there.
Other questions at this time?
Not for Anthony?
No. Thank you Anthony. I really appreciate that.
General question.
Go ahead.
About, so just the thought, when, just from talking about parking, the other thing for which Vineyard has been known for years and years that I've, you know, the last ten years I've been in this area, it's, it's the bugs. It's what's flying around once the sun sets. And I haven't heard a lot of talk. I mean, we talk about walkability, but I'll tell you what, Vineyard becomes, you're running for your life at certain times of the evenings. Okay. I personally have run very quickly when the sun has set and I'm somewhere where there's a fair amount of mosquitoes and bugs. And being that we're creating this beautiful, amazing, walkable area, I just, it, I'm not saying I have a solution. I'm not saying there is a solution, but I do think it's something we need to be thinking about. Cause I love being outside at night. It's wonderful. It's amazing. And so it's just, I want that to be a thought. I know there's probably no one has an answer right now and that's okay, but something we need to be thinking about.
Well, I think the excitement about that John is that with this lake funding coming in, there's gonna be differences and changes with the fragmities that are there. So we'll see that improvement. But also as the area opens up, I see the city and the development working on the abatement that would be natural in these developments. And what we've noticed as growth and development has happened in our area when we did have to run. It's no longer like that. So that's, so that's exciting. So, but I think it's gonna be like a all-out effort as we're close to the lake and we always will have to deal with the midge flies. So.
John, it's like the tumbleweeds. There's less every year.
Remember when they would cover?
As long as we keep that going, I mean, this whole walkable plan at night is gonna work great. I just, we gotta be thinking about that too.
Yeah, I have some questions. If that's okay. And it, it's good to get individual feedback from staff, but I mean, is there anything standout from staff that we need to be more aware of? That you feel like maybe is not being addressed as you think it should be?
Yeah, we, we need to work out, out the parking. Um, and so the, and I, I don't wanna get back into another parking discussion, but there, there were some changes proposed by the developer. And so, um, we, uh, we need to look at what that the current requirement is within the parking code and, you know, work something out with them. Cause, um, we, we have the, the same, the same concerns. And the, I, I do wanna put in, um, as well, let you know that the current code does allow for shared parking. And so that, that, that's not a change. And that, that's actually a very common thing. And we, we do want shared parking because from the RDA, we're investing a substantial amount. And so for us to have parking that just sits unused, it would be a really bad public investment.
Or it, shared means daytime, commercial, evening resident. Okay. I just wanna make sure I'm understanding your usage.
It allows for a, a portion of it. So right, right now. And so it's not a, a hundred and a hundred. Cause obviously some people stay home during the day and work from home. So not everyone leaves, um, but a lot do. And so it would be, it would be really kinda foolish of us just to require, you know, standalone parking for every single, single use. You would, you would essentially just get surface parking out there. So, um, we, so we, we do have to be kinda careful with that. We wanna be able to make a very, um, a, a very urban and, and walkable community. We still do need enough parking. The, the, the street parking, um, at, at this point, unless, you know, things change from the council, um, is gonna be public because it's gonna be on, on, on public land. So to, to kinda, um, David Loray's point, that's one thing that's really nice about having a smaller block design is you do have a lot of public parking that's gonna be right in front of, uh, retail shops. And that's really important. As you've seen in that Jeff Speck, um, presentation, one side of the street and a couple of the photos he shows where there's not parking, the retail has no one over there, but the, the side with parking, all the outdoor dining, um, tables are full. And so it, it really, even just that couple of feet, if you can pull right up to a restaurant, it makes, makes it a lot better.
And I have a question and Pete maybe, so it, that public parking we're talking about, somebody brought up on-street parking. Or it's my understanding, we're not accounting for that for residential parking or we are?
So there, there's a combination of both.
On-the-street parking as well?
So there's a combination and there, there's, I mean, there, there's a lot of formulas on what to use. What, what we've done is just looked at, um, one, one of the best experts in the country is actually at the U. And so he's compiled a whole bunch of data from a lot of mixed-use projects all over the country. So that, that's the information that we're using to figure out how, in a mixed-use project, how much public parking do you need to have for people coming into, to this walkable community to park and walk around and shop in the shops? How much do you need in a transit oriented development for the residential? How much can overlap with the commercial? I mean, you don't have, like, like Morgan was saying, you don't have a total overlap. There's some percentage of shared.
So how, how do you, how do we account, not having that data right now and trying to make a decision?
We have it.
You have it. Do we, do you have it?
So what, what we've asked, um, them to do, so we met with Professor Ewing. He's, he's amazing. He's like the number one, um, person in the country or in the world and looking at mixed-use developments. It was something that was never, when, um, when, when studies were done on parking is typically they look at single uses. But he's really one of the only ones that's looked at mixed, mixed-use developments. And I think he's in the several hundred project range now. So there's, it's really good data. And I believe Ryan Hales was gonna work, it has been working with him. So what we've asked for is, uh, a recommendation from the traffic engineer based off of those studies on, on what a, uh, to, on, on the parking to, to help us, um, with the parking solution. And so, um, we don't, we don't wanna do an arbitrary number. We do wanna have something that's based off of, um, very similar type, type projects. And so, um, uh, the plan is to have that hopefully for the planning commission so they can make a, make a recommendation.
And he goes into like a great, like algorithm of how the mixed use brings people into the commercial and what makes it functional and how to not have it fail. Cause there's a lot of areas that are mixed use that have nobody walking by them. And then they fail and the commercial goes down. So it's all integrated. Before you keep going, if you have additional questions, I'm gonna turn the time over to Christie because she's actually going to leave in the next five minutes. So I want her to be able to get her questions out.
Thanks. I just had a couple of comments. So I don't know if you addressed this with the parking, but like when I used to go to urban communities and I would see the parking along the streets, it used to bother me. I'm like, why are all these cars in the streets? And as I've come to understand it, there's such a safety barrier in those cars, which is, answers that question you're have, you're, that problem you're seeing Julie where there's nobody walking on the streets, those cars, that barrier that provides parking, but it also provides safety. It's something I actually really like about this plan. Um, I appreciate the comments about the skate park, the bouldering, hammock parks, that types of things for, uh, to help offset some of the residents that might not, their needs might, might not be met. And I know that's things that we've been talking about having those in the city center. So we'll make sure we keep working on that. The sustainability that was brought up, um, perhaps you should take a minute to read the general plan to everybody that's coming into our city. Any developers for any project, especially the town center should be going through our general plan, looking at our sustainability chapters. Cause that, that is something that residents and we have put as a priority in our city. So let's just make sure we keep going back to that and updating it as we need. And, um, you know, David brought up that, which is my main concern about this plan is bringing, one of the big concerns is bringing people from the outside in. We, we're excited for the residents who live there and can enjoy those amenities, but if we can't get our other residents in there, um, that's gonna be a shame. On the west side, we have that path like John's talking about. On the south side, we have another path coming in under the, you know, Vineyard Connector, which is great. I've already been talking a lot with the engineering department and staff, trying to see how we can get people across the main street safely. A lot of this depends of course on what happens with the Vineyard Connector, but we wanna be able to make our community walkable for everybody. And I just wanted David especially to know that, that's something we're taking seriously and looking at already. The only major question I have about the actual codes that we're going over tonight, um, and I appreciate that we'll most likely be visiting this again, is that thirty percent we talked about on the, the lakeshore there, um, that could go up to six feet, that whole issue we brought up. My one concern with that, and I'm curious to see if the rest of the council is concerned, if they brought in, say, one huge like hotel, could that potentially take up that thirty percent? And we have one massive structure that goes up six feet that takes up that thirty percent. Is that what that code is saying they could do? And are, and if that's the case, do we want that? Are we okay with that? Do we wanna put codes in that says that thirty percent has to be broken up?
Yeah. I mean, we, we could put that in the code. So, but if you wanna address kinda how it's written now.
Yeah. I mean, theoretically you're right. I mean theoretically, somebody could come in and say, you know, based on the, the overall square footage of what, of, of what's there, you could go up six feet. I, I think that scenario is really, really unlikely because that, that would be, you know, um, a long distance to go six feet.
Well, I mean, it's, perhaps, I mean, if a Four Seasons comes in.
Six stories, six stories, six feet.
Six stories.
Six stories high.
Yeah. Yeah, six feet.
While we say it might be unlikely, we're saying that that would be a possibility.
The way that the code is written right now, that's true.
Want that.
Right.
If you did have some amazing hotel or something that came and said, we wanna build a huge thing here. I'm just saying if we don't put in a code that says we have to break that up, that's something we're allowing. And I guess I'm saying this to the planning commission as well, is that's just something I think we need to think if that's what we wanna allow or not, or if we need to add a code. And I'm, I'm not necessarily saying what my opinion is on that. I'm still gonna have to think about it. But I'm just recognizing as I'm seeing that.
That's a good point. So that.
It's something we should probably discuss.
In light of that, since this was my major issue.
Are you done?
Oh, I'm done.
I've just been piggyback.
Thank you Christie.
Have fun. I, the only thing I'd like to see is maybe a definition of where those view corridors are.
For a map.
Yeah, I think, I think you're right. That would, that would address.
The rest of it I think will be fine as long as we have that portion added to it.
Okay.
Seems like definitely around the promenade. That's, that's one.
I think there's a couple of natural places where we could.
Where the, in the Vineyard Beach.
Box those out.
There was only, just kind of on a personal level, I was recently up at the Farmington Station Park. Very walkable mall restaurant residence grocery store, a kind of a little bit of everything. It was awesome. It was beautiful. It's kind of something in or along the lines of what I, as we've been talking for months and months and months. I mean, I'm not saying match that, but anyway, it, I don't know if that's generally the direction we're thinking about going. But if I'm, if I'm seeing that as kind of the right, I mean, am I seeing that as kind of what we're talking about here guys or am I way off?
No.
Way off?
I think that one's.
Tell me way off.
Yeah, I think that one's okay.
Our, our goal is.
Make it better.
Yeah. Honestly, I mean, our goal is when this is all said and done, that Vineyard Station or whatever it ends up being called is what everyone in Utah talks about as the premier project in the whole state. And so our goal is, is to make Farmington Station like our little brother, you know, just. Sorry, hopefully my little brother's not watching that. I love you Sam, you know.
His little, no, no. So, so, um, just really quickly, so those, those types of projects are what these, this one's being patterned after. So that walkable, connected, mixed use. So Center Cal did a great job with Farmington Station. They're doing it in Riverton right now. And there's, there, there are getting to be some better examples in Utah, but there's, there's nothing on the scale of what this project is proposing. But, but then, then walkable mixed use that you, you were like, wow, this is great. This is, this is what I had in my head that I hope turns out. That's, that's the, what we're trying to do.
Just, uh, from a staff perspective, just so you guys know kind of what our process has been and what we'll continue to do. We compiled comments from our first meeting, delivered those out, uh, and DPZ has been working on the amendments. And so we'll continue to meet with these guys over the next few weeks and, uh, hammer out any additional issues that we see. So if there's anything else that comes up, please get those to us as soon as possible because we are working with these guys, you know, continually to get all those changes made. There's been a lot of changes made and we'll continue to make them.
Yeah, thanks. That's a great point. Cause then we can have a better presentation the next time that's, allows for good conversation.
So on the district's map that we have that was in the packet, I just noticed that we showed UVU on there. Is that an actual district or should we take that out?
We can take it off.
Yeah, I think we should probably, it's good to know that they're there, but it's not a part of this.
Correct.
Right?
Yep.
I have some notes. Is that okay?
Please.
Okay. So in the town center districts under number two, it talks about in the town center mixed use, this TCMU district. Talks about single purpose office buildings. I'm assuming, cause we took out a lot of pictures. Something that I'm a very visual. So like when you were trying to explain the thirty percent, seventy percent, that's just hard for me to verbally see. So the hardest thing in, in this plan for me is not seeing what it looks like. It's verbally, and I understand probably planners can probably understand it better that way. But for the public and for myself, it, it's a lot harder. So when you say single purpose office type buildings, are you just saying a strict, single purpose office?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. So, and just to address that general comment real, really quickly, I think what you, what you may have heard Matt say when he was here was that the reason why they removed the pictures is because they didn't match the code.
Right. So do you wanna put some pictures in that would match the code?
Yeah. I mean, I'd love to as soon as we design the buildings. So let's approve the code. We'll design the buildings to match it.
Okay. And then, one of the issues I have in the code in general, anytime we use the word encouraged, I think that's, it's terrible. You either require it or you take it out. So it, encouraged is put in there a ton. And I think if it's something we need, it's required. If it's not something that we need, it's not, I mean, just because we encourage something that has no teeth that we can go back and say, well, we encouraged it, so put it in. Would, would you agree as a developer, if we said, well, we encouraged you, what your response would be?
Well, I mean, honestly, I would say that the things that, that are in there that are encouraged, we take very seriously.
Agreed.
So if you're saying, is there a legal enforcement mechanism to enforce encourage?
Correct.
You have to enforce.
You're Dave Church right now, right? And there's, there's not.
That's to say shall.
So it needs to say something specific. And we had, going through it last time, I mean, we, we tried, we tried to do our best at taking those things out. And so I saw a lot of encouraged in here. So I would prefer us to try to, I encourage you to either require or we, we decide what we need. And if it's a requirement, have it as a requirement.
That kind of language is good in the vision statement. But other than the vision statement, if you, you want something, you, you need to say shall.
Agreed. Yep.
And I think a lot of that encouraged language comes from the previous code.
Okay, perfect.
It does. It had a lot of.
So, so, I mean, those are just ringing over saying the last code had it.
You, you got a, what is it, DPZ? Come on, you're paying them a lot, right?
Well, yeah. I, I, but, but our direction to them was to leave the code alone as much as they could. So they, they tried not to rewrite the code. And part of that was just in deference to how much time and energy went into the original code. I mean, I, I think, you know, they, they probably wouldn't write it to say encourage, but they also didn't want to wholesale start over.
Okay. And then there was another section in here. It talked about street trees and things like that. Aren't we better off referring to the vineyard tree?
I already take care of it.
Okay.
That's done, yeah.
Some of the diagrams for like street types. So on 3.0, and there's a figure in here. Once again, I like pictures.
Yeah, the, the street types will need to change because the, yeah, the, the fire code, engineering department and, and George brought up, the, the fire code didn't match some of the streets that we had designed in the project. And so we're going through that right now. Those will all be updated to match what they need to be.
God, you're just telling me all my questions are not important right now. Yeah, I wouldn't say not important. Well, I, yeah. I guess I come back to the 50 units within an eighth. Well, you, you talked about an eighth of a mile. I think you talked about a quarter of a mile, having certain amenities.
Yep.
Not having that specifically spelled out in front of me, it's hard to give you good feedback on it. But I guess a general question is why 50 units, I get some cities have used that as a standard. But understanding that you are not just piecemealing this, right? That it is overall, why not look at it as an overall or block-by-block basis versus just a 50 unit? Part of what goes into that question would be overall HOAs, who's going to have access to that? How is it stipulated in here that we understand who even gets access to it? So how is that enforceable from the city's level? I, I guess that's just a can of worms, I feel like.
That's a great point. And I think as, will probably would be acceptable, would be to change that to say, every multifamily unit has, is within this proximity and has access.
Okay.
Because I think there's two things here that if I were, had your hat, Pete does now. So Pete, if I were you and I were on their side, I would be thinking this. If you're within proximity, and then for some reason, we end up selling off parcels of ground.
Right.
And it's within proximity, but they don't have access to those amenities, then obviously that doesn't benefit that resident. So I think what we ought to, what we could word it after thinking through this here is just, every individual multifamily unit will be within this proximity and they'll have access to. So that if, if for some reason we sell land and they don't have access to the amenities that we've built, they'd have to construct their own, their own, because they don't have access to. So I think, I think if we did those two things, I think it would solve for what you're trying to do. Because going back to the blocks, the one concern, because we thought through that, well, what if we build this here and this here and this here? But not knowing how this is going to absorb and what's going to be where, you know, we may end up with a whole bunch more office because we get some big tenants right next to the train station. So therefore, we don't want to go and build, plan all these amenities in the code this way, which was kind of the thought with DPZ on, well, if there's proximities, then, then we can, we can make it work within the whole code.
I like what you're saying better. And, and the only reason I went block was because I, I guess we progressed to where it should be, per unit. But how do we track that when stuff comes in? Is that on a site plan basis? How do we, I mean, that just creates another thing that you're going to have to track in the future. So.
Which is common for these, these kind of developments. I mean, it, a lot of that's on staff too, making sure that we have really good records as, as we go forward. And also if we need to, within the code, having, having mechanisms so things are phased in, depending on the number of units. And so I, I, yeah, I, I think it's, it's definitely doable. We'll have to look at the language to make sure that we have everything. The other thing we need to consider too is the Lakes, the Lakeside Residential, which is the Edge Homes Project.
Yep.
Depending on how you write it, they could have access as well. And so you need, so if you're not, if you're not going to include them in your overall HOA.
Because they're technically part of the zoning area. Yeah, that's a good point.
So something to, to look at.
Okay. So another hard thing that I've noticed over time from being on the planning commission and city council, RDA, whatever it is, is, so we talk about these improvements and the amenities that we talked about on, on the promenade. And I think they've all are amazing. And we're all excited about it. But unless we get a commitment now in writing, it's always hard because things do change. And we get the market's going to dictate a lot of this. But with the density and, and things like that and changes that are being made, I, it's hard for me to give a open yes. It's not a blank check, but it's close. And then not know exactly what's going to go in there. What's going, going back to the pictures thing and trying to understand what actually amenities we're talking about.
So I, it's not really a blank check because the check's already written. It's, I mean, that, those, those levels and those levels of service are already in the development agreement and the zoning code. And so there's already a standard there. And then there's, then there's.
Based off the, the previous code, not, this is a new code.
Yeah.
Well, it's, it's a revision to the previous code. But that's the baseline that we're starting from, right? And so, so I understand what you're saying. Like, how do we know what we're getting? I think you can look at the code and you can know where exactly we're getting at least this. And what we're saying is, there's incentive structures built into that code to incentivize additional amenitization. And we're saying, we're, we would like to take advantage of those incentives to amenitize it more than the code requires.
Okay.
And we could potentially do something with, with, because I, I, I think part of the concern too is like you have a, the, the units come in, and then there's a, a long time before the, the amenity gets in place. So you have someone who comes into a project and they're waiting a year or two. But if we have, you know, potentially, if the amenity that is going along to meet the requirement, that distance requirement is bonded for.
Right.
Or if there was some sort of mechanism to make sure that, we could pull that bond if the timeframe's coming along.
So that, and that's, that was my next point was triggers, right? So what, what's triggering all of this? Bonding, I mean, understanding what, what we need to do on that side. I kind of expected when Bronson got up, I think you were talking about, I kind of was expecting to hear that mechanism.
So that, that mechanism is in the code. So there's, there's a requirement to, to develop the adjacent part of the promenade, for example.
Perfect.
When you develop.
Did we change, did we change that? Was that changed at all?
We just haven't really talked about it because our vision was to put it in sooner than the code required.
Okay. I think it would be good.
But I think if you go back in the code, the, the enforcement mechanisms that you're looking for are in there. We just haven't spent a lot of time talking about them because we expect to be ahead of the schedule that the code provides for.
Yeah. And I think maybe from our side of things as a city, we, we can do a better job of talking about those things. Because people do look at it as a new code. And so they're wanting to make sure that we, just like the first time, did all that work. We've done that work again and verified that we're going to get what we expect. So I think maybe talk, having a presentations for the public comment period so they know, you know, what, these are the things we expect to get. These are the bare minimums. That way people don't think we're not getting anything. Most people aren't going to read through the code.
Sure. I think to answer that, we're not, we're not, everything that's in the code is getting better. There's nothing in the code that we're saying this is worse. So it's, it already has the base amenities. We've agreed to continue to do those base amenities. We're just, I mean, as we've talked, we have an incentive now because we have the development agreement that says anything above the base amenities, which was 1.2 million dollars, is reimbursable. The first 1.2 million dollars, we just have to put in. But our goal is, is to not put it in and then tear it out. So, so that's the thought behind that. So I think it's important as we, I mentioned that to planning commission as we're going through this. And I, I mean, our vision was, we, we went and we hired these best architects in the country. And they said, well, actually, you know, we have this, this plan of this building. And they're like, you can't do that with your code because they need to have double-hung windows. And we're like, well, how do you do an office building with double-hung windows? That's what the current code says. And it's like, well, you don't do, you know, lead platinum buildings with double-hung windows. It's just not how that works. So that's what I'll say about that. I will break some news here too, as I just got on my phone.
Oh, really?
Rudy Gobert has probably tested positive for coronavirus. And the NBA has suspended the entire season. Tom Hanks has also tested positive for coronavirus and his wife from The Washington Post. So anyways.
So you said probably tested positive.
Well, they suspended the whole season.
Don't panic, don't panic.
Anyway, so when he touched all the microphones the other day, cracking jokes about it, it wasn't too funny.
And we have bug problems.
Not funny. Okay.
I just said not to panic.
Abby?
Yeah.
So I guess, I guess first, from, from my perspective is, I think it would be helpful to have an overview, honestly. And I don't know if that's in conjunction with the developer or from the city level, just because it feels, it will feel like to people, it's a brand-new code. And I, I understand we're revising the code, but it still has to go through the process a new code would go through. And so I think we, I think we need to educate, do our best so that people can come with public comment and, and understand that we're doing our best job.
What might be really helpful with, with the amenities is, so you're going to provide the language. But I think having a graphic, and you can put in there an example of, you know, like, they say, this is an example of where amenities would go. And so, and then you could show the, the rings and then just show dots. And I think that would help the public understand basically that the number of, of amenities, you don't necessarily say. Because if you say, I'm putting a pool here, then the person who buys the townhome there is going to say, where's my pool? But if you make it really clear as an example, that would help illustrate the, the amount of amenities. I think there's going to be quite, quite a few.
Yeah, that's great. Happy to do it.
I, I would just add to Chris's comment. I would really like to see the revised version of the code that we're going to see X number of days in the future posted and notified, just like we would do a meeting. People may not read it, that's their choice. But we need to take the initiative to put it out there for them, for them to see before they come to a meeting. You know, I've lived with the proposed code and the red lines of the code and et cetera for three weeks now. I know it, but my wife doesn't. Well, she's not going to read it anyway, but.
So we, she could if she wants to.
I'll tell her and she could go read it, see if I told her the truth.
So we, we attached the, like, all the information that you have was attached to the planning commission staff report and to the city council staff report. But what we're going to do, Pam, and thank you very much, Pam, she's probably put about 40 hours into taking the code that, and I'm not even exaggerating, that DPZ provided us. And she took our current code. So she read through every word side by side. So like 54 pages or so. And she's, she's put in all of the underlines for additions and all the strike-throughs for anything that's going to be taken out. So, you know, my hat goes off to you. She is, she is really, so I, I owe her some lunch. But, so, so what, what the staff report will have, for your staff report, it's actually going to show the public exactly what's changing.
But I still think we should post the whole thing. Okay.
Can I just say one thing? As soon as we get these additional updates, we'll work on that as quick as we can. So as soon as I can get those, I will be, might be at a conference next week. So it might be a little difficult to get it done, but I will work as fast as I can have it done.
Great.
So that's why I worked to get this done now. But it will be posted with the next agenda. It has to be. It's got to be in ordinance format.
Yep.
If they're going to make a motion on it.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
And, and just kind of generally, I mean, we appreciate all this time that staff has spent on this too. I mean, you know, when Jake kind of struggled for the right word, when he said, we're working with them. And he wanted to say daily, and then he said hourly, but he said continually. Because that kind of felt more like the effort that they're putting in. And we appreciate that.
Excellent. Are there any further questions? If not, why don't we, I guess, get a motion to close this session?
So move to close the public hearing.
We already did.
If you could do a, a motion to continue to march, continue the public hearing to march.
I'll make a motion that we continue the public hearing until March 25th.
So I have a question. We went out of a public hearing.
We can go back into it next time if we're continuing.
But we're just continuing this. Okay. I just want to make sure we're doing it right.
Then we have to read notice the paper and everything.
Excellent. Public hearing continued. That's you.
That's my second.
Okay. All in favor? Hi. Okay. And can I get a motion to adjourn?
I don't know if we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you so much for coming.